Okay, so with that, I would call the Waterloo Schools Board of Education meeting to order. And I'm going to start this evening by reading our mission statement. And that is that the Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening, item A, is the public hearing for the lease on the Summit Complex to embark. So at this time, I would open the public hearing and ask our board secretary if she has received any comments on the public hearing that wish to be shared this evening.
I have not received any comments on the public hearing.
Thank you, Pam. Sue, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have anything from individuals that had been submitted to be read or anything.
We do, that's actually going to be our next item. Unfortunately, those were flip-flopped on the agenda, and so I'm doing the public hearing first. That's the way it should happen, it should be our first order of business. I apologize, I should have told the whole board I was doing that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, thanks for keeping me honest. So, all right, so I have declared the public hearing open. And I would ask, do any board members have any comments, anything? We will be addressing this later on in our consent agenda this evening. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Thank you, Sue, and I need a second.
Second, India.
Thank you, India. And Pam, I'm just going to roll call vote this one because I think I'm supposed to on a public hearing.
Correct.
All right, so then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. India?
Aye.
He got rebooted off, he sent a text.
Okay. Sue, did I get you, no, Sue.
Aye.
Lyle?
Aye.
Aster?
Aye.
Who am I missing? Stacy? Is Stacy on? Okay, perhaps I can, somebody could send Stacy a text and just remind her. I've got at least five members there, and chair votes aye, so we are closing the public hearing on the lease for embark, and we will move on with that in more discussion in our consent agenda. So now it is time for information from individuals and delegations, and I would invite anyone who wishes to address the board. I will be asking our board secretary, Pam Arndorfer, if she has heard from any of our constituents who wish to have anything addressed this evening at our meeting.
Hi, sorry, I'm kind of trying to do a couple different things here.
You're fine, we're, no rush.
A couple things, we did receive just a little bit ago. Sorry, we did receive a letter that is concerning some personnel appointments, and I am just questionable because it is a personnel appointment, whether that should be read or not.
Right, perhaps we could have Kingsley.
Could Kingsley weigh in on that?
Dr. Lindeman, do you have a chance to look at your emails, either one of you? And could you let the board secretary know what your opinion is? My opinion is that that is inappropriate in that it is directly relating to personnel. And I would not want to have that discussion in the public forum.
Right, and Pam, do I have a copy of that letter? I could, I mean, I can scan it and so can Kingsley just to give an opinion on that, but, um, yes, I'm going to send them to you again right now. Okay, and I think. Yes, it was an email form.
It was an email.
And I, I think it would not behoove us all if we would, you would state that you received it from someone regarding and not go into detail, because I think in fairness, it needs to be identified that that person sent something.
How about I let?
So in the meantime, until we hear back from them, let me go ahead with another one. We did receive a letter from a parent, a West High School parent. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I received a letter from a West High School parent concerning the graduation. The parent's name is Dan Bogart, he sent a rather lengthy letter. So this morning, I had emailed him and asked him to just reduce his remarks a little bit so it meets the three-minute timeframe. So he did that, sent that back to me, so I'm going to go ahead and read the comments from Dan Bogart. He is a West High School parent. "I know I speak for many frustrated and disheartened students and parents when I say I hope and pray that this graduation decision is not set in stone. My senior daughter even felt compelled to email you Thursday evening to express her hope that her graduation ceremony would still allow her to walk across the stage in front of her friends and family, no matter how far into the summer it had to be delayed. And less than 24 hours later, that hope was crushed. The proposed plan completely fails the senior class in a time where they need you to stand up for them and honor them with your actions instead of your words. And the email Friday announcing the plan was completely tone deaf and callous. We keep hearing the mantra, quote, 'We're all in this together,' unquote, but this plan proves otherwise. It completely misses the point of what graduation is and means to students, celebrating together one last time with everyone you've spent virtually your whole life with, and being affirmed and congratulated for your own accomplishments. This plan robs these seniors of all of that. Here are two better solutions. One, postpone the ceremonies until later in the summer after this virus flare-up subsides, and still hold them at McLeod Center or even the Dome with minor safety tweaks. Or two, hold them outdoors at Centra, Allah, High School Musical III, with, quote, 'We're all in this together,' pumping through the loudspeakers. Now that would be a memorable graduation ceremony. There would be plenty of room to social distance for families. It could use both sides of bleachers and even seating on the track. Also, either option could be livestreamed so our family members who are at higher risk could watch at home live and feel like they are part of it. Those who choose not to be present could still submit a photo that would be shown on a screen when their name is called and edited into the final official video. But this should be a key takeaway. We live in a free country, and it should be left up to the students and their families to decide whether they attend the ceremony in person or not. No one has the authority to take this away from them except you. The health officials can only make recommendations, and even though they promote hashtag #factsnotfear, all we seem to hear from them is fear. A relentless, unjustified fear that we are killing someone if we don't follow their rules. What you don't hear from them is how incredibly low the risk is for students. Based on the CDC's own hospitalization rate of one in a million for the 5- to 17 age group, if all of our 800 Waterloo seniors contract the virus, none of them should get sick enough to be hospitalized. For them, the seasonal flu is deadlier than COVID-19. Compare that to driving. Young drivers are more at risk for causing accidents and doing harm to themselves and others, but we don't take everyone else off the road to make sure we're all safe. With proper education and reasonable precautions, we let them, even encourage them, to drive. So that begs the question, why are we punishing them? Therefore, I strongly encourage you to reconsider the graduation plan. There is still time to change direction and appropriately honor this year's seniors while still maintaining safety. If you truly care about the class of 2020, you or we will find a way to make it happen. I guarantee that you will have an army of parents that will help. Our kids have had enough stolen from them this year already. They want to be together to graduate. They deserve that and so much more. Signed, Dan Bogart, 2020 senior parent." And board, I will be, like I said, Dan, Mr. Bogart, had sent a rather lengthy letter, and I will email that out to the board in its entirety at the end of the meeting tonight.
Is this an appropriate time to have Dr. Lindeman give an update on what's going on with that?
Actually, Sue, if you wouldn't mind, I've asked Dr. Lindeman to add that to her comments at the end, and if you wouldn't mind if we take that all at the same time, would that be all right?
Oh, sure.
Okay, just to keep, she, it's in Dr. Lindeman's remarks at the end. If that's okay with you, unless.
No, that's fine, it's fine.
Okay, great. Were there any other public comments, Madam Secretary? Trying to get back to you.
Sorry, no, just the other regarding the personnel appointments, and I really don't think that it's appropriate to address that at this forum.
Okay, okay, well, that is possible, board, that I will be back in touch with you regarding that. And if there's something further that needs to be sent confidentially, et cetera, that cannot be addressed here this evening, I can get that sent to you, so. All right, then we will move on to item B, which is the Iowa Economic Development Authority Grant, which is on page three. And the recommended motion here, I'll go ahead and get this on the table, and then I will turn it over to Jeff Frost. So the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept with gratitude the $25,000 grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority in support of registered apprenticeships at the Waterloo Career Center.
So move.
Thank you, Aster, and a second?
Okay.
Thanks, India. And with that, I will, like I said, turn it over to Jeff Frost. He's our Executive Director of Professional and Technical Education. Take it away, Jeff.
Hi, everyone. So we have received notification the last week of April that we've been awarded, it's called the 15C Grant, because we host a registered apprenticeship program at the Waterloo Career Center. So the grant is worth $25,000, and it has to be used for aspects of running a registered apprenticeship program. The caveat on this, which is kind of strange, the grant process, the grant year, the fiscal year for it, runs July 1st of 19 through April 20, or June 30th of 20. So we are awarded it on the 29th of April, which basically leaves us two months to spend it down. But, but the reality is, there are things that, you know, this is where I can talk to Michael and Jeff Sommerfeld, and there are things that we've put into this program that we can apply towards this grant. So it's a win-win, we get $25,000 for being a registered apprenticeship school. It is a short window that we have to spend it on, but we have the ability to spend it and make adjustments on it for things that we've already done within the fiscal year. So really, it's just a matter of Michael and I and Jeff talking and figuring out how to make the adjustments, because at this point, with everything that's going on, it's going to be pretty difficult to do much more in this fiscal year with the registered apprenticeship program.
Jeff, might I ask a question? I know you said that this is counter, you know, it goes, it started in 19, and now it's running out at the end of 20, at the end of April or the end of May. Was there something that, you know, going forward, we need to remember in terms of applying for this money so that we are, we can get it earlier in the cycle? Or was it just that it was backed up and we just didn't get it on time?
We had to, so we had to have a person placed in a registered apprenticeship program by December 31st of 19, of the fiscal year started in July, but they want somebody in your program by December of that year. I think we placed our person on December 29th, and you can't apply until you actually have that. They actually had, I could not apply until January 20th, they had to have a three-week window. So by the time we applied, and then when they went through the steps of vetting the application, we just got notification. Actually, we were supposed to hear in March. They sent me a letter with everything that was going on, that there was no way they were going to be able to get to it in workforce development. So obviously, it's very understandable with all they're doing right now, that we, you know, I'm surprised we actually even received it, to tell you the truth, with all the money that they've put out for different stuff. But yeah, really, it comes down to placement of apprentices in the program, and we didn't get our first one placed until December 29th.
Jeff, with the, the numbers at the WCC, do we foresee this grant being applied for in the future?
Well, you have a one-time opportunity in each of the programs or apprenticeship areas. So there's six service areas in the state of Iowa. One of them is manufacturing, so we just applied and received our manufacturing one. So I can apply in business, information technology, health careers, and the other five areas. Well, really four, because we don't have an ag program, so there's four left that I can apply in, apply for in and use that money to, towards the program of the apprenticeship. So we can technically apply four more times for about another $100,000.
So Jeff.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, Lyle, we, what he meant was we don't have an ag program yet.
Correct. It has to be in place during the fiscal year when you apply. Ag and verticals.
Yeah, made my day. Jeff, what were the items, if all went according to normal, what would money be spent on? What were the items identified in the application?
Great question, so we can apply for a lot of things. We can apply for guest speakers that we bring in, we can apply for field trips to get our kids exposed to the manufacturing world. There's a lot of things our students did do and go out and do. We took, actually, John just helped supplement a trip to Chicago to an expo that they had out there. But it's anything revolving around exposure within that career field to get kids excited about that career field. And then when a student crosses the line and becomes an apprentice, anything that led to that process or that piece of getting them into that program, or any students at least exposed to it, we can use towards that. We can also actually extra pay, we can actually partial payment on instructor salary time there. So there's a lot of different places that we can use that in, and again, it's going to be just basically, Michael and I figuring out, looking back at what we spent in advanced manufacturing and where it meets the code of the apprenticeship, the 15C Grant.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and it does actually state in the payment procedure that you submit a request by no later than September 30th, 2020, so you have a little time there.
We do, but all of the, yeah, so great point, so Michael and I do have time. It all has to be spent down by June 30th, but we have time to figure out where that money was spent. So actually, you know, my, at this point in the game, really what it's going to come down to is us kind of figuring out what we've done so far and what we can really, I would say, move eggshells or readjust budget money that had been spent somewhere else and apply this grant towards that. We actually do that with Perkins Grant all the time, we get to the end of it. We have a discretionary amount of like 5%, what's called administrative, that's applied towards my salary, and it's basically figuring out, you know, what amount of money we slide into that. So Michael and I will sit down and figure that out.
Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
It's been a good year for grants. We've, I think, I was just looking, we have received $75,000 in grants this year, and I think we've received over $130,000 in gifts. So we've taken in $205,000 in grants and gifts for this year. And actually, right now, I'm working on, the state is still running with this, but we have a 110 grant possibility for $1 million. We've actually been identified as an academy, and because of that, they have an academy grant. And so Dr. Lindeman and I are going to be working on that. I've been working on the backside of it, but I'm going to need Jane's help to really kind of move it forward, because it's, it's an academy model. But from what we're hearing, we have a pretty good opportunity to get a $1 million academy grant. So that's due by June 12th, and we're just putting pieces together on that, which would be an amazing grant to get that. And they're still following, they're still doing through with that, even with everything going on. They had the money budgeted and set aside for this.
Mind us, how many students will be going into the fall?
Into the.
A question?
The Career Center? We had about 13 hundred students register, and Steve Winters at West and Josh Payton at East just pushed their buttons on scheduling last week. So for the next month, our counselors, working with coordinators, are going to be taking any student that had conflicts within their schedule and moving them over. So it's, right now, it's a fluid number. The conflict rate was pretty low at both schools. What typically will happen is they always have to schedule band first, because they always have to have that first block or first period, and then they can push out, depending on how they do it, schedules after that. So right now, they're just working through conflicts with counselors. I should have a firmer number by the end of May.
All right, anything else, board? Okay, then, all those in favor of approving the Iowa Economic Development Authority Grant, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, the same sign? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks, Jeff, that's exciting. You keep going on those grants. So the next item on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda, and it consists of eight items. The minutes of the April 27th, 2020 regular board meeting, and the April 30th, 2020 special board meeting, which is item C. The personnel appointments and adjustments, which are item D. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, item E. The Area Education Agency, AEA, food purchasing agreement for 2020, 2021, which is item F. The lease of the former AEA 267 building, which is item G. The Iowa Association of School Boards 2020, 2021 membership dues, which is item H. The Iowa School Finance Information Services, or ISFS, 2020, 2021 subscription fee, which is item I. And the lease of the Summit Complex to embark, which is item J. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda tonight?
Item D as in dog?
D as in dog, okay?
K as in jack.
J as in jack.
F as in fox.
F as in fox. We got all kinds of animals going on. Anything else? Then, could I have a motion to put items C, E, G, H, and I on the table, please? Thanks, India, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sue. Then, all those in favor of approving those five items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the same sign? Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item B, which is on page 12, and that recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So move.
Sue and India, I'll give you the first and the second, does that work?
Great.
Perfect.
Okay. And discussion, Aster, I think that you pulled this, I think you may want to start.
Sure, in the past couple of board meetings, we've seen quite a bit of proposal turnover at East. Just curious to know, what are we looking for going forward as far as the hires? And also, with the new athletic director taking position, how involved? I know there's a transition period between outgoing AD and the incoming AD. How soon are we looking to fill these positions? And how much input will both the outgoing and incoming athletic director have in that process? So if Kingsley can speak to that a little bit, would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a great question, Aster. And so, can everybody hear me? Just a thumbs up, just to make sure, okay. So as we look forward with the hire that happened last board meeting with Tim Moses, I know that there is a change that is occurring as far as the vision for East High, and I believe that many of you know the history of East High and what it has meant to athletics, not only in the community, but also for the state. And so, I don't want to put that entire burden on Tim Moses, but it's something that he's spoken candidly about as far as, you know, the standards, the expectations of how we, not only as students should be moving in, representing East and representing Waterloo Community Schools, but also how coaches should as well. And so more information will come within, with that. We are working earnestly over the, hopefully work earnestly over the next couple of weeks slash month to get many of those positions filled. We will also be incorporating the new athletic director, recycler director, Tim Moses, in the hiring. There will also be a couple of changes that I've spoken to a couple of you, a couple of you about as far as the, the expectations being clear from the onset with what are our goals moving forward. There will be some more systemization of the evaluation pieces, just a, just a change as far as East High athletics, and, and modeling some of the things that are happening at West High with the success that Dr. Pappas has had. And so, to answer your question, Aster, there is a change that's happening under the leadership of Tim Moses, under the leadership of Dan Huff, as we move forward with not only hires, but also what are we expecting out of East High Athletics as an entire program, not only from the coaches, but also from the kids. And then also from that, we also, we are looking at ensuring that not only Tim Moses participates in these hires moving forward, but also Dan Huff, from the district perspective, to make sure that we have alignment across, across the programs.
Do we have a date? Do we have a date going forward of when we're looking to make these hires?
As soon as possible, and so, once, once the agenda is approved, you know, we will look to posting those positions beginning tomorrow, going through the five-day posting period, five-distant-day posting period. So they would come down, they would come down next, next Tuesday, and then starting interviews that week for those posting positions. And the, the key piece here, you know, obviously, we're in this crisis that doesn't allow for us to bring people in physically, but we've had some success, even with the East High coaching AD process of doing things virtually and getting a wide swath of candidates from across the country participating in our process. And so, we're excited to see where we can do and use that process again for these coaching hires as well.
Thank you. I'm, I'm concerned about the sequence. I think that perhaps change is certainly warranted, perhaps massive change, but successful change, I think, no matter whether you look in business or elsewhere, comes with the proper policy and process. Those are the two things I'm looking at, policy and process. I'm a little embarrassed when I looked at our policy. 510.4, I think, is the only one that I could find. And it's, our policy isn't too bad on middle school, but on high school, it says nothing. All it says is, we're going to comply with the rules of the Iowa, Iowa High School Athletic Association. So the first step is, in, in terms of the philosophy of athletics, is to develop, further develop a policy that's meaningful, and then follow it up with regulations to further define those goals, at least the district goals, and then sport-specific goals with yardsticks of measurement, so that everybody knows, you know, this is what's going to be measured in. You know, everything from one-loss record to character development, distribution of playing time, academic performance of athletics, recruiting to get proper squad sizes, involvement in sophomore program, even middle schools, fan attendance, college, scholarship. There's a whole litany that needs to be weighted in some manner in order to develop this yardstick of measurement against which, you know, success will be evaluated. So, you know, everybody needs job security. I think any coach interviewing right now with a number of, you know, with the changeover we've experienced, would have to consider it a high-risk job. So I would suggest it's important to. with the changeover we've experienced would have to consider it a high risk job. So I, I would suggest it's important to, and Kingsley spoke of this a little, put the policy in place. Put all the goals and objectives down and then hire to get a best fit for those specific goals and objectives. Otherwise, you're kind of like saying, yeah, come and coach for us, but we'll determine later whether you're doing well based on some unspecified. So you get the best fit coaches. I think we need the policy. Then we need, uh, the yardstick, the goals and objectives. And then I think we're in a position to really recruit and certainly a new athletic director would have some, some, uh, hopefully a lot of input in that. And you can really develop a team that buys into all the goals because that's why they were hired. So I just think, I just think going through the hiring process now without that in place is risky on, for two reasons. One is some of the best coach, and often the person you want isn't looking for a job is the best fit for the job, the person probably isn't even looking for a job. So I don't think we're really strong in recruiting at this point unless we get those, the policy and the, uh, procedures in place. So I just think, I think it's a little backward. I think, and then, and then once you get the yardsticks in place, you can certainly quickly measure and evaluate, uh, the current, uh, staff against, against those yardsticks. So, so that's mine.
Yeah, I would agree. Um, we, there's definitely some room for improvement. Uh, we do have some things in place that has obviously led us to, you know, the, what we've done, um, so far or right now. Uh, but I think going through this process, um, recently and looking over, over my tenure for the last two years, I, I would wholeheartedly agree with you. There's definitely some things that we can clean up, um, that we need to clean up. Uh, not only just for East, but I mean, looking at athletics across the board to make sure that, you know, you know, even as an AD, that we're clear on our expectations and we're clear about the walkthroughs that we need to do with practices and things along those lines. So that's definitely something I can talk with Dan about and, um, share with him as we, as we continually discuss, um, kind of what this looks like, not only from a hiring process, but just from a program standpoint as well.
And Lyle, I'd like to interject. Um, I, this has probably been five years ago now. We had a pretty robust athletic committee that was working. Um, that I was on that had, I mean, it had Jim Miller. We had some really great people on that that put together, I thought, some really great recommendations for how we as a district look at recruiting and, and some of the things that you were just speaking about, Lyle. So we may not have to go back to completely, you know, uh, to the drawing board is what I'm saying is there may be some valuable information there, Kingsley. I can dig through my past files even, but it, I have a whole binder, you know, Dr. Norris loved binders, but I have a big binder of that. And then I think Jay, you've seen it too. And there was some really good information there that I think perhaps, you know, Dan and getting back to that, I think could be really helpful to us going forward.
But it, it didn't, uh, advance towards. It didn't accumulate in policy, I guess.
Yeah, clearly. I was just going to say, cause we talked about this a lot and it just hasn't, it hasn't made the leap. So we need to make the leap. I agree.
Well, I think, I think a lot is probably, you know, being done in practice in some areas, but by extension documentation may not be matching that too. So, and there might be new items that we need to include that wasn't covered back in that timeframe as well.
I agree with Lyle. Um, I know being on the policy committee, there are a few policies that are written, that are written in our policies and procedures, um, involving middle school athletics, uh, combined with high school athletics. And I'm not sure if those are taking place at, uh, at all. So I think Stanley made a good point about the athletic task force or athletic committee. I, I think the athletic committee and a lot of the policy and procedures involving, um, athletics need to be looked at a little bit more. I, I, I wholeheartedly agree. I do.
Kingsley, this is Sue and I was just, um, first of all, wondering if you would just explain as they were talking Pam and, um, Shanley and Jane about an email they received, what the policy is about speaking to personnel issues, just so people are aware that, um, that this is the legal way that we should be and are handling things. And then secondly, just wondering about open teaching positions, if we've seen any attrition with retirements or, um, more teaching spots in all fields open up in May now. Thank you.
Yeah, Jane, uh, if you want to chime in here as well, I mean, in general, we're talking about, um, any type of, um, individuals, um, as it pertains to, uh, the personnel appointments um, on the agenda, uh, we don't normally allow for, um, directly focusing on, uh, a particular person. Um, you know, and if you want to talk about category, if you want to talk about, um, you know, uh, an entire group, that's different. But any type of correspondence in regards to that, um, would really be inappropriate for, um, deliberation, especially since the board doesn't have the opportunity um, to, to talk back, um, with whoever is sharing misinformation. And then upon further looking at, uh, that email and question, Sue, um, the correspondence was particularly naming, um, Jane. And so, um, I don't even know if it was something that the board would have normally received, um, in that regard as well. And so for those two points, um, I would say that would be why that information wasn't, um, been read. One, because it was just, um, an email sent to Jane, um, and then two, just because of the fact that the board doesn't have an opportunity to respond um, to, um, individual personnel, um, appointments.
Kingsley, I would add to that, and that there were a few extra, and you may not have seen the other email coming in as well too, but there were a few more. But really they were specifically, um, I would term just in briefly glancing at them, letters of recommendation.
Gotcha.
For, uh, for a certain individual.
Okay.
No, and I, thank you. I just wanted to speak to the legal aspect that we were not trying to not, um, address something that was addressed to Dr. Lindeman even in front of the whole board, but that, the reason why we can't do that.
Great point, Sue. Thank you for that.
Absolutely. And then to your other, uh, questions, Sue, uh, around open teaching positions, I'll speak briefly about two, um, patterns that we've seen. And so, um, you know, in general, our retirements again are in par with where we're normally at. Um, I would say that we are seeing some interesting, um, patterns where our middle school and our high school has seen a lot more, uh, changeover, um, that we're trying to now fill. Our elementary has stayed somewhat static, which, um, isn't normally the case. We normally see some, uh, you know, just general turnover as far as people leaving from positions, whatever the case may be. And so we're trying to combat that now with, um, job fairs that we put on forward. Um, we have a job fair for special education. Oh, can you hear me? Oh, okay. We have a job fair for special education, um, coming up this Friday. And so, uh, there is a number of, uh, different things that we're trying to do to basically plug the different, um, holes that have happened with people leaving at a secondary level, especially if we talk to the core positions. And because this is being recorded out, I'll just briefly mention again, the, um, the licensure piece, um, that we have. I've, I've been on the phone with a number of different candidates from different states that have, uh, programs that have allowed for them to teach, um, right away. Um, and it's, in compositions, um, especially, um, diverse candidates that we have not been able to bring here. Um, we're still working with VOE on that. And so I'm not saying that they aren't open to having that conversation, but uh, the licensure issues that Iowa has compared to its, um, neighboring states, I, I, I tell you again, over and over again, are large and severely hamper our efforts to get just general teaching positions filled.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kingsley. I think, I don't see anybody else waving at me. So with that, um, y'all are okay. We'll go ahead and vote then on the recommended motion, which is approving the personnel appointments and adjustments as listed. All those in favor, please. Bye bye. Thank you. Thank you. Get it. Okay. And a second?
Second?
I think India and Sue put this out. Yeah. Okay. Great. All right. Then all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So I believe that was five ayes and one nay, even though he said aye, because I said aye. So there you go. Perfect. Thanks Pam. All right. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item F as in fox, area education agency, food purchasing agreement. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the contract between the Waterloo Schools and the area education agency for food purchasing during the 2020, 2021 school year.
So move.
Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
India or who did that? Got it. Okay.
Okay. My question on this is I noted that 60% of our purchase on a monthly basis is required to be through the AEA, uh, purchasing, uh, consortium. Uh, does that restrict our menu in any way in normal times? And B, does it restrict our menu, uh, making sandwiches or box lunches during, uh, during remote learning?
Great question, Lyle.
Yeah, I actually, I, I haven't heard that. So I don't know exactly how to answer that question, whether, I have never heard that that is a restriction. I've only heard positive for this program so that there's a, a cost savings to it. But, um, Lyle, we could certainly ask that specific question. Get back with you. I apologize. I don't, I don't know that. I, I want to say that if there were a problem, I would have heard about that, but I don't know that that's necessarily fair. So we'll, we'll definitely check into that.
Particularly, particularly with, you know, I, because it's on a monthly basis, we can be on remote for a month and I, I don't know how that 60% of a small amount could be kind of.
Yeah. Michael, have you, have you ever heard them say anything about that?
Okay, I finally got unmuted. No, I have not heard anything, um, to that effect, but, um, as most of the laws have been, um, adjusted to the COVID-19 issue, I don't see why this would not, um, adjusted to appropriate conditions that we're in.
Okay.
And Jane, if we could look into, maybe ask Heather, our, uh, food nutrition program director, if there's any follow-up with that, we can get that out to the board.
Most certainly. We will do that. Check on that.
Great. All right. Is there anything further? All right. Then all those in favor of the recommended motion between the Waterloo Schools and the AEA Agency, um, for food which is during the 2020, 21 school year, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item J, which is on page 58. And that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the lease of Summit Complex parcel ID 8913-27-403-007 to embark for the purpose of a community vegetable garden. Thank you, India. And a second? Great. All right. And discussion?
I just wanted to bring this up just because it was, um, it was in our community and let people know and be aware of this. I think it's a great way to use the space, um, and like letting people be aware of this is happening. Uh, it's a space that oftentimes have gotten looked, but, um, it's going to be really cool to have it being used in a very positive way for the community. So I just wanted to let the community know about that and be aware.
It's awesome. And it's a great way for us to partner with an agency and firm that can really use it. So.
Definitely.
And they definitely provide great services so to many of our, uh, populations. So it's awesome.
Absolutely. And I believe discussed that there will be some type of signage, um, people are aware that this, what the space is being used for. So if you do pass it, you're kind of wondering if there'll be a sign coming up soon.
Sue, yeah, that was a great idea. And I think that that was relayed to, um, I'm not sure. Is it Wendy? Who is the person that we're dealing with at embark?
I don't know. We're dealing with Karen at a bar. And I did speak with her and there will be signage that will go up.
Fabulous. Thank you. All right. Anything further than on the lease? All right. Then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the lease for the Summit Complex parcel, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So that concludes our consent agenda tonight. And that takes us then on to item K, which is on page 63. And this recommended motion this evening is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 365 Chromebooks and Chrome education licenses from Dell and 365 carrying cases from Amazon at a total cost of $89,158.55.
So move.
Thanks Sue and Jesse. And with that, I will turn this over to Matt O'Brien, who's our, uh, Director of Technology.
Sure. Um, I can give a bit of background and then, um, Kingsley can also, um, chime in as well if I miss something or if he has something to add. So our paraprofessionals have had access to technology in the past, but we have not issued all of them devices, uh, whether that be laptops or Chromebooks in the past. Um, some of our paraprofessionals have been issued devices, specifically our special needs paras, uh, that work, uh, with Medicaid reimbursements have had, uh, a Chromebook actually issued to them, um, but we have not done that across the board in the past. So, uh, looking at, we've actually been talking about this for a while now, actually about a year or so, just kind of looking at what the job description of the paraprofessional is and, um, what resources they actually need to, uh, perform their job functions. Um, and have actually trialed giving all paras, um, a Chromebook or loaning, issuing all of our paras, uh, a Chromebook at one of our high schools. Um, so from the feedback that we got from that pilot through this year and the feedback that Kingsley got from administrators and as he, uh, looked at the job descriptions for our paras, uh, it just really made sense, even in a normal environment, um, to start issuing our paraprofessionals a device. Um, but with the COVID crisis that's happening, I, I think that that further cements the need for this group, uh, to make sure that they have access to technology. Uh, obviously we all hope that next, uh, school year goes, uh, more traditionally, uh, and we don't have any more closures. Um, but of course there's, uh, no guarantees with a little bit of uncertainty, uh, that we have right now. So, um, I think this is, is a good step forward in normal times, but certainly given the uncertainty of the future, it will make sense to issue all of our, uh, paras a device to make sure they have access to technology. Kingsley, did you want to add anything or anything I missed?
Uh, no, I think now you said that well. The, or I guess I just said no. Said that well and, um, the only thing I would add is this is, some of this, this is, there's multiple phases of this and, you know, it started with the, the negotiations. I'm not starting with negotiations, but it's part of the negotiations. It's a part of, um, moving forward with this. And then there will be more as far as, as Matt articulated, the change in the jobs. Um, professional development that has to change. We're really looking at, um, I have to give credit to, um, Lyle, um, because of some of the conversations that we've had at, um, at the finance committee or some other meetings, I believe, in talking about utilization of our parrot educators and, uh, what we can do. And so, um, you know, really hearing from Lyle and others, um, I think we, we can take a huge step in regards to utilizing our, our parrot educators that frankly have been asked, asking for, um, wanting to be more partners in this effort. So we're excited that we have the ability to, um, spend our resources, um, in regards to this. And as Matt articulated, you know, with or without kind of the crisis that we're in, it's a, it's a good use of our resources. it's a good use of our resources to ensure that our employees, especially our parent educators, have the access that they need in order to do what they can for our students.
So there's nothing in their job description that would prevent them from utilizing these for the data collection and student monitoring that's mentioned?
There isn't, but we want to be more, provide more clear guidance about what that looks like. And so some areas, basically their job description right now is general. So some areas do, some do Medicaid billing, some of them do, sorry, I always have a mental freeze that I haven't muted myself, or I've muted myself, sorry, I was going to look. Some of them do have in their job description, it's not specific, and so we want to make sure that it's an expectation across the board, not just for certain paras in certain buildings, and that will, that will do a little bit better job as far as making sure that that is not only in their job description, kind of going back to what you were speaking about before, when they're hired and a part of their hiring process, but also a part of regular evaluations and check-ins and onboarding that frankly, a lot of our paras have particularly focused on, and to make sure that they feel valued, so that we're retaining our parent educators as well.
Very good, thank you. Approximately, how many pairs do we have in the district total?
We have about, you know, four-hundred or so paras. You know, within that group, I'm also counting clerk typist and some other people, and so the number is probably more around about three-sixty.
And that's, that's exactly the number that you're seeing proposed, so I think when we did the count of just a paraprofessional and the behavior intervention specialists, that group that we're talking about, I think the number was like three-sixty-three. We always want to make sure we have an extra one or two, so that's how the number three-sixty-five wound up on the proposal in front of the board tonight.
So, Jane. Last time about making sure that teachers, including our pairs, have Wi-Fi or a hotspot. And I know hotspots are on backorder, but at some point, will we make sure that we have enough coming in the future with hotspots for not just our students, but our staff to be able to have access?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that, and we haven't had that conversation, and Matt may want to chime in. But I would also say, because it hasn't been, well, it's been in the job description a little bit, it hasn't been a clear expectation. And so some of that onus may fall on them to say, okay, I want to get internet in general. We just have some people that don't have internet at all. And so that may be something that they do personally that we look at, but I think we will have to think about what we do to provide internet service to our staff so they can have that access to do what they need to do for students.
Sue, I think you had a question.
I did. So Kingsley, what now or Matt, is the normal protocol for communication between a para and the teacher? Were we requiring the para to use their own devices, phone calls? I mean, I just see that them having a Chromeback would be much more effective in the communication process between the teacher and the para.
Are you saying right now, Sue?
Yeah, like what are they, like since COVID-19, how are they communicating?
Yeah, a lot of it is via phone. You know, it's kind of all over the place, and I think that's where we alluded to before, where it's via phone. We do have some of our paras that had some responsibilities that allowed them to use a Chromebook. And so they're still using their Chromebook in regards to maybe either they've completed Medicaid billing now, but some professional developments, some other things that we're doing, and in regards to teachers are communicating via email, I think along those lines. But primarily, it's been via phone, just because we haven't had the, you know, the access that is necessary for them to, you know, communicate more efficiently.
Well, kudos for getting this through, because I think that it's a great thing and really a necessity for better communication between our teachers and paras.
And can I ask a quick question, Matt? One of our board members put in the chat box about, maybe you just answered it, about whether or not these would be coming right away this year or if they would be waiting and distributing those. I'm assuming that as soon as they get here, they'll be distributed.
And sorry, I didn't answer, but we were talking about hotspots at the time, so I think I actually took the question incorrectly. So probably provided an answer to a different question in chat. So Chromebooks are actually very heavily backordered, so we wanted to get this ordering now so that we could get them this summer. But they're, they are almost a two-month lead time at this, at this point, just because of supply chain disruptions and a huge demand. So the goal is to get them this summer, so that we'll be able to deploy them in the fall.
Be ready to go, so excellent.
From a personal standpoint, I think this is an awesome thing. With a lot of what we're dealing with now, with the virtual Zoom meetings and Google Classroom, every, every call or every meeting that my oldest son has been on, every single para in his class has been on every meeting. I don't think one para has missed a meeting, and I believe there's probably five or six paras in that, in that one particular classroom. And without the technology, and I'm not sure if they're using their phones, if they have their personal computers or however they're logging on, but every single para has been involved and can visibly be seen in those Zoom, those classrooms, Google Classroom or Zoom meetings. So I think this is awesome. It'll allow the paras to engage a little more, and I just think it's a great thing.
Aster, I wrote that on my, on my agenda tonight when I was reading it earlier, that I said, yeah, it's just one more tool in the toolbox for our paras to, who are already going above and beyond, and I think it's, as Sue, you said it very well as well, but this is a great way to keep our staff engaged and connected and, you know, and really feel part of the process. So, Lyle, way to go, good idea.
And I would just add one more thing, Shanley, that this is something that WS, the union has been, is very supportive of as well. When we talked to them about the ban in general, they were overly excited, asking whether or not they could come to the board meeting to, I mean, to share their support. And so we're just really excited about that partnership and knowing that we're going to be able to move forward.
Great. And the only thing I would add is that we have talked internally with buying, buying the Chromebooks is one piece of it, but the professional development and allowing them to really know the, you know, the full extent of what it can do. So not only the, the professional development on how to use the device, but also professional development between the teacher and the para to help them know about how this can change expectations back and forth. And so both of those things will be forthcoming and are, are part of this proposal. They just don't have a cost associated for the board to approve.
Got it, that makes sense. All right, well, um, I would entertain, the motion is on the table, but all those in favor of approving the hot, sorry, not the hotspots, the Chromebook purchase, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Those, that concludes their action items for tonight, and so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her report. Jane, you're on mute.
Darn it, I needed a Kingsley moment there where I checked that, so thank you for that. So just a couple of things. First of all, as Shanley mentioned, I did want to really address the graduation information, and I, I, I wrote down a couple of comments, and I want to make sure that I give a little bit of feedback too. We have a survey out right now, so I'll try to provide a little bit. So I don't want to necessarily respond to the letter that was, was read earlier, but part of this will be in response, so, you know, generally a response to all. So first of all, I, I think that the, the graduation plan that we put out, we have amended that a little bit. We wanted to make sure that we had a way to honor our current seniors in a way that was timely and allowed for everyone to participate. So that's really how, you know, that, that was our very first, first and foremost plan. And then we've kind of amended that to add several things to it. So I know that there are varying opinions on the spread of the virus, how serious, some say it's not serious, some say it is serious. And so I'm not really in the health business, and so you know, we've really relied on the opinions and the input from other organizations, of course, public health, but others as well. And so I, I, I fully understand that as many people as there are, that's how many opinions there are, but so it's, it's not a, it's not an easy decision by any means. And I, I want to also be really forthright on saying that, you know, there was no intent to short our graduates in any way, shape or form. I, I, I'm a little, you know, maybe offended is the right word, the, that we have been tone deaf, tone deaf and callous. I, I think that's, that's, that's not fair. There's no intent to rob anybody of any, of any opportunities. Matter of fact, we know how important this, we're, we're in the kid business and we love kids. And so we are working for a way to try to, to help them celebrate, but there is a balance between, you know, the responsibility to keep people safe, but also the responsibility to make sure that we celebrate and recognize this, this milestone accomplishment. So we want to make sure that we come up with something that is meaningful. So the, you know, the safety is certainly an issue, but we do want to make sure that, that we are celebrating our kids, because they deserve it. They absolutely do. So just a couple of things. First off, maybe just go over a couple of ways that we're, we're celebrating. So right now, we do know that, you know, we've announced that we're going to have a virtual graduation for each high school, which will include a slide for each graduate, and I've seen a little bit of a mock-up of some of that. And so, and it'll include the graduate, the speeches and the music and a lot of the typical celebrations there. We also are doing virtual awards ceremonies for each of our high schools. We have, that'll be shared with families on social media. We're recognizing students. We've had, you know, awards in the area of different content areas. We have athletic awards. We have governor scholars, the Bernie Sagar Award, National Honor Society, academic decathlon, decathlon, and then, you know, some individual scholarship winners. And so we have a variety of ways, a variety of things that we want to celebrate with our kids. And so we're definitely going to get that information out so that people can watch that and see all of the amazing accomplishments of our kids. We're actually doing, we're also doing senior tribute videos, so we can recognize our kids, and that's being shared in June, highlighting the seniors. And of course, that's, we're at the mercy a little bit of seniors who submit those. So we hope that people will do that, because we have amazing seniors and we want to, we want to celebrate with them. We're also doing the Adopt a Senior Facebook page, sharing each senior profile posted on our Facebook page. And if you look at our social media stream, you can see those are really some great, great stories there. And then just recently, I think this weekend, I'm not exactly sure what day it came out, but just recently, there was a, the Waterloo School Foundation, we're partnering with them, and they're doing yard signs to honor our seniors and our teachers in our district and just recognize that. So there is, and they're doing it as a little bit of a fundraiser, so I think they make five dollars on a sign, but I, so I think that's kind of a neat thing. So I hope people will participate in that. And then the other thing, we have, we, we do intend to do some type of an in-person, hopefully in-person celebration later. We, we did put out a survey to our families and to our, our, our parents of graduates and then also to our graduates. And so just a couple of statistics, in case that's interesting. We had, we have had to date five-hundred-seventy responses, and so that will remain open a few more days, I believe. We'll have Tara get that out, just so give parents and seniors one more opportunity to log in and give their feedback on that. But we had five-hundred-seventy responses, and if you're curious to know, it is two, two-hundred-eighty-eight of those were students and two-hundred-eighty-two were parents. So very, very evenly split, just about, almost exactly the same. And then it was a nice representative sample based on the population of students in our, in our three high schools at East, West and Expo. And so it really, really looks like it's a night, it's not, you know, predominant in one school or the other. It was just a nice representation there. So in that, in this survey, we asked parents if we could, you know, if we can figure out a way to safely do something here, you know, we want to, we want to, in addition to the virtual graduation, we want to make sure that we are recognizing our seniors. And so it does appear, we had five-hundred, out of the five-hundred-seventy responses, we did have five-hundred-and-fifty-four who actually completed that particular question, which was actually a rank order question. So they had multiple choices and they just drug them. You know, the top one is their first pick and so on down to their last pick. And so it looks that, um, so it, it looks like the, the two top ones, and they're not that far apart, but the two top votes are really doing a graduation ceremony in some way later in the summer, July or August. And then the second one was doing something where they could actually, actually just walk a stage, even if it's with their parents or without their parents. Of course, with their family members in some way, even if it, there were some comments, you know, even if it could just be one person or two people, they would still like to do that. So that was definitely the, the, doing some type of a graduation ceremony. And then interestingly enough, the third vote was that they would really like to do some type of a, a senior event. If we can do any of those, then they would like a senior event, like a, you know, they talked about maybe doing a cookout or something like that, but that did not, that was not the top getter. The top getter was definitely doing some type of a graduation. And then in the survey, we did ask if we were able to do something later in the summer, would you come? And so we had a little over three-quarters of our students who said that they would attend an event if it was held. So we knew we wouldn't get everybody. We have, there were a variety of reasons why people listed why they wouldn't come. Some, some, you know, actually said it just, it wasn't their thing or it wasn't meaningful to them. Some people said they were leaving either for employment elsewhere or military, a variety of things. So some people said they would not be able to come, but there were a lot of people about three-quarters, a little over three-quarters. So I, I think if we could get seventy-five or eighty percent of our graduates to come to an event, I think that would be, you know, very meaningful and very, very worth it if we can safely do so. The final thing that I would just share with you is that we actually did ask parents, you know, if you were, would you be willing to help in an event? And we actually had eighty-three parents who, who signed up to help, and I saw some of our board members' names on there as well as I scanned through that. So we will be getting an, an email out to the, so far eighty-three, and we might have more than that as we go. So just letting them, you know, read some of the comments and weighing in. We talked a little bit about how to utilize our parents, and I think what we will probably do is create some committees and ask parents to sign up. I mean, we might have, if, it depends on what we're able to do, but let's say that we're able to do some type of a graduation ceremony, even if it has, you know, I, I'm not choreographing exactly what it would be, but you know, if we were able to have parents come in or in some way, shape or form, we would have, you know, we might have somebody helping with, you know, the, the gate or somebody helping with social distancing or maybe somebody helping with, you know, getting traffic flow or whatever that might be. So and then just one other thing, I guess I would like to just say a couple, or just maybe read a few of the comments. It is, I'm looking at the parent or the, the comments at the end of that, and there's, there's about a hundred-and-fifty comments, so a significant number. And so, you know, I'm just looking at the first ones on here. I understand this is an important milestone in lives. However, in the grand scheme, I don't know that a graduation ceremony is that important. Then the next person says, I have been waiting my whole life to walk the stage. This is so important. Let's see, so my, you know, a lot of people saying, thanks for reconsidering. I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in. One person saying, please don't do a video graduation, wait and do the real thing. And then the next person said, please don't take away the virtual graduation. This is the first time my extended family can actually watch together. I think you should do it every year. So you can kind of get the feel, you know, some people saying they're, they would come, some people saying they wouldn't come. So there's a variety of things, but overall, generally, it was very positive. I would say out of the, the hundred-and-fifty comments, I would say the vast majority of them are in, in support of some type of a graduation, whatever we can do. So I think that's, you know, that's pretty good feedback. I'm just trying to see if there's anything else I wanted to mention here.
Jane, could you check the chat box? There's a question, there's one question. India, I'm totally sorry, I just talked over you. There's a question about explaining the difference between voluntary, this is off of graduation, but voluntary versus mandatory in terms of the, the education plan, the continuous learning plan?
That is my second comment. So if we're done with graduation, I can go on to that.
No, India has a question. India has a question.
I have a question on graduation. So were you processing thinking of having Waterloo School graduation or will it be separate from school to school?
Yeah, I think, India, you know, we haven't really announced that, but I will tell you, my personal thinking is that we would do something separate. First of all, we, you know, we have seven-hundred-and-fifty graduates, and so if we do one big event, then we just compound the, the problem of minimizing the number of people who are there. So I'm still thinking separate, but again, we're going to have, you know, we're, we're going to work on this over the course of the next few weeks. And my first urgent thing is, is trying to get some dates out to people, because I think there's a lot of people who want to know when and where and who and how that would look. and where and who and how that would look. And so we'll, we we may not know exactly you know, exactly what it is in the next week or so, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna be able to frame this up very shortly. The other the other thing I did want to mention too is, and I, this is a tricky situation because I never, ever, ever want to try to do a comparison or pit any district against the other. But, you know, I have received a lot of a lot of questions. And there was an article in the paper yesterday that talked about graduation celebrations across the the area. And they were talking about Cedar Valley. And so there was a, there was a one district that they were kind of talking about what they were doing. And they were going to have all of the kids come in and walk across the strage and bring their family with them and family members and videotape that. And so I did want to just share, and maybe this kind of goes with my opening comments about, you know, there, we're not trying to be tone tone deaf or rob anybody of anything, but that actually was our, I mean, our first, our first preference would have been to have graduation as is. That always has been the preference. And, you know, I I think most of us, whether graduation was really important or not, we all remember it. And so that would have been our first preference. Our second preference was to be able to bring our our kids in. And so we did have a plan that was written that we would be able to bring our graduates graduates in with their family, walk the stage and videotape it and put it all together. And so that was our first preference. We we worked with entities who were, you know, would have opinions about whether that was safe to do that or not, and and including Black Heart County. And so when we put that plan out there as as having them be part of our committee that worked on this with, you know, which had a variety of people, including all of our high school principals. That really was not deemed as as a safe option for us. And so we did gravitate away from that, which is why we ended up going with the graduation ceremony. I know there are other districts that were also sought that feedback. And and so they're doing the same thing we are. And it it was never our first pick. It never has been, it never was. But it it was what we did in order to to attempt to keep the kids as safe as possible. Having something later may be the best of both worlds where we can do something now and then have something later. So we, that way we snag all of the kids before they leave us, you know, or leave the community if some of them are going to do that. But then we still have an opportunity to come back together. So I just, I really, I I hated bringing that up because I don't want to do, you know, one district, another district. I just hate to do that. But I've been asked so often, and I just thought maybe this would be a good platform and a good time to say that. So that's, that's kind of how that has, that how that came to be. So and if there aren't any other questions than that, I would go to my last topic, which is the return to learn plan. So I'll pause for a moment. Did anybody have anything else on graduation?
Yeah. So, and you may have addressed this, and I'm trying, I can't hear very well what I what I'm using right now, but there's no reason that it would it would preclude doing an actual ceremony later if we do the video one, correct?
Oh, right. Yeah, this was right. That was, and that we made that very clear in the in the survey that we sent out. It was in addition to. So no, one, one doesn't take the place of the other. The only thing that could, in my mind, the only thing that could stop us getting together at a later date would be, you know, if if something happens with public health or we have governor, further governor's orders or that kind of thing. So in my mind, it's it's both. Okay. Okay. So bringing my comments to a close, what I would say is that I wanted to address the 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 recent return to learn plan. On Friday, the department, Iowa Department of Ed put out the the return to learn plan. And I've mentioned that in a previous board agenda or board meeting that the return to learn plan is that every district in the state of Iowa has to file a plan that that talks about how we're we're going to bring kids safely back into our schools and what our plan is to start to relaunch our learning again. And so on Friday, they posted that plan and and you'll hear a lot more from all of us, including Dr. Mohorn, as we go through with the instructional piece. But there were three pieces of that. So every district will have to make a decision over the next eight weeks whether we would do a plan that is a required continuous learning plan. And that's, or we where we would bring kids back in person, or whether we would do a hybrid of the two. And so we will be working on that. I've got some plans, but not, I mean, I've got some ideas that are rolling around in my head, but, you know, we've only, we've only seen the plan or these these pieces for the last about three days here now. So the required continuous learning is is not what we're doing right now. Right now, we're doing a voluntary continuous learning. That was the options for this spring. You had a choice this spring to do voluntary or required. Next year voluntary is not on the table. That is not an option at all. So next, next fall, starting in the fall, if you're going to do any type of continuous learning, if you if you deem it's not safe to come back, which I'm not saying that that's the case right now, but if that does happen, then it will not be an option to do voluntary. So all kids will have to log in. Involuntary, it's expected that kids would participate, but it's not required and there's no penalty if they don't. Except for that, at some point in time, they're going to have to catch up. I guess that's, you know, that's not a penalty. That's just saying we have, we have to make sure we catch them up. In the fall, if we if we cannot come back in person, which obviously will be my preference to come back in person, if we can't do that, then there would be attendance, there would be grades, all of it will be just like regular school. So everything is continuing on and it will be required by law that all kids participate. We would also meet all of the requirements for individual education plans, IEPs, five oh fours, all of that would be required because that is the difference between voluntary and required. So that's what we're going to be working on right now. I don't have anything to report to you right now, what that plan will look like. We've, we just got the template on Friday. And so we are going to start working on it ASAP and we'll hopefully have something to report to you. We, I I do suspect that we'll probably have to do some contingency plans, like maybe we'll plan for being back in person on, you know, on the first day of school, but then also what happens if we can't? Because some of that we may not know until a little bit later. So that's kind of the work going on behind the scenes. I don't have a lot of specifics at this point, except for just to explain the structure of what the state of Iowa is going to allow going forward.
I had a parent who had shown me some recent legislation that changed how this voluntary looks versus normal voluntary, that there was some legal accountability for five oh four and IEPs, even though it's voluntary. Is that? Were we reading it correctly?
That is not my understanding, Stacy.
Okay, I'll I'll show it to you because it really is. There's a lot of stuff that's, it's hard to understand. So.
That's probably a better question for, at a separate time, instead of a if if that, can I follow up with you later?
No, yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. I appreciate that. So I'll move on then to comments from our directors. And I will start with Lyle, because I think I started with India last week, so or two weeks ago. So I'm gonna start with Lyle tonight.
No additional comments. I was glad to hear we're adding Ag to the WCC.
There you go. Writing.
Can I make a motion?
All right.
Nothing else.
Okay, thanks, Lyle. Aster.
I'm not sure if this was mentioned before. I I seem to think it was, but I wanted to mention it again. I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Dick Urban and the Team Five Eight Three Seven Unity for Tech Robotics Team for, I believe they won the chairman's award. So I'm a new robotics parent. So this is all kind of new to me. I did get an opportunity to visit where they actually test and make the robots and stuff. There was young men and young women in there doing an awesome job. So congratulations to that team. I look forward to the next three years of being a robotics parent and learning a little bit more. So group, great group of adults, individuals and students as well. So huge congratulations to that group.
We are going to try also in the future to get them here for a board celebration. So it's really cool.
Big deal. All right, Stacy.
I just wanted to congratulate Irving again for being part of the what is it called? I'm looking at here, the I H IHT. So that they're, they're being part of a webinar, actually, as we speak. And it's focusing on the student fitness and emotional wellness that they use with their heart monitors, which I got to see in person for a little bit when I visited there. And it's amazing. And the fact that this is now something that's being recognized nationally, coming from the Waterloo School District. That's amazing. So congratulations to Irving and to Cory and everyone involved.
Super. All right, Jesse.
No additional comments tonight.
You got a haircut. Can I make that comment?
Yes, I gave up the battle.
That's all right. It's all good. Okay, India, did I lose you?
I'm here and I have no additional comment. Thank you.
Okay. And I have no additional comments tonight either. I've clearly interjected myself enough. So I would, I would, what'd you say?
Did Sue have any comments?
Um, Sue's gone. She had to jump off. So
Okay, sorry.
She said she had no comments. So pardon me, I should have told the the whole group that. She sent me a text. I'm trying to do too many screens at the same time. So so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, India. And second, hi Jesse. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned. Good night and have a good evening, y'all.